I'd like to call this meeting in the Westland City Council order and begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Melissa Sampie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Pro Tem Murkowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampie.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
Acquorum, Mr. President.
All right, we have no special presentations tonight. We'll move to questions room, put on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person we recognize only beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from council. Is there anyone on my right? Sir?
Yes, hi, my name is Josh Powell, I'm a Westland resident. I wanted to speak on consent calendar item number, or, I'm sorry, letter H. My, I don't have a disagreement with putting out more lights per se, but I just think it would send a good message to DTE if we halted possibly any future extra contracts with them. Obviously, we have to pay them for power, but I think it might send a good message, or we might set a precedent to, just to hold them more accountable as to put on hold any additional spending with DTE until they work out a plan or somehow respond to the crisis of the energy in our area. But, that's all. I mean, I understand the need for lighting, but that just, I think it might be a good idea to send a message of some sort.
Is there anyone on my left? Sir?
Arthur Warren, citizen, president of Southeast Westland Homeowners Association, and community leader. Under your consent calendar, Resolution J, I'm finding it difficult to understand what the city unions have to deal with, do with creating a Juneteenth holiday. And I think the Juneteenth issue was an issue of the late arrival of the information to slaves in Texas, two years after the Civil War. And it's kind of troubling to have your unions, which are predominantly white, making some decisions about what occurs on Juneteenth, when it has specifically had to do with slavery and impoverishment of Afro-Americans. And still, I struggle for freedom here in this country. So, I would urge you to table this issue until you begin to talk to some of the black leadership, Afro-leadership in this city in regards to this Juneteenth issue. Other than that, because as I said before, we in the Afro-American community, we would decide what our history is, and it would not be decided by any outside forces. And if you don't want us coming up here and riding this council down, I think you should table this, set it to the side, and since this comes from the administration, I think, and the legal department, have a talk with the Afro-American leadership within this community to see what they think, in other words, what the unions think. Because it seems like it all it would be is just a payday off for the unions, and it would have nothing to do with the black community. So, I would urge you, postpone it or table it, before you create an uproar in the black community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on my right? Anyone else on my left? All right, we'll close input on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move J for discussion.
No, can't do that.
Oh, can't, I'm sorry.
Nope. We just got to move for the consent.
Okay, I'll move.
Thank you, I have a motion from, excuse me, motion from Pro Tem Murkowski, supported from Councilwoman Sampie. Really quick, I think what Mr. Warren was thinking was about J isn't correct, so I'm going to go ahead and let the attorney address what that has to do with. So...
So, if I understand it right, you would move both J and K?
No, I think the question was about J. I would like you to address what the LOA really is with regards to Juneteenth, and not, it's not the approval of the holiday, it's just an LOA with their union. So, but I'll let you address that.
So, as written, J would recognize Juneteenth as a city holiday, and in terms of the city unions, it would be necessary to negotiate letters of understanding with each of the unions. We envision a single letter of understanding. If this resolution passes, that council is authorizing the Director of Personnel, the Law Office, Mayor's Office, to do those negotiations and execute letters of understanding so that this Juneteenth is a paid city holiday handled like other federally recognized holidays.
So, I just, clarification, the LOU with the unions is just to ensure that it's a paid holiday for the unions, not them approving Juneteenth being recognized in the city. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. The resolution has both the piece of the city recognizing Juneteenth, because it's the federal holiday, and then, the way the collective bargaining agreements work, we either have to negotiate things like this, or enter into letters of understanding, which is what we LOUs, which is what we typically do.
Okay. There was no other questions on the items. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Councilman Godbout?
Yes, I'd like to move item J and K off of the consent calendar to items 1A and B. Support.
There's a move, motion to move items J and K, consent to new business from Councilman Godbout, supported from Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Back to the consent calendar. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items: Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and the study session held April 3, 2023; Approval of minutes of the study session held April 4, 2023; Approval of annual workforce management subscription with Tyler Technologies Incorporated for a one-year term in the amount not to exceed $14,875.37; Approval of 415 Microsoft Exchange G1 license renewals for the use of Microsoft Online for email services. Terms shall be for a one-year period amount not to exceed $18,874.20; Approval of CityWorks licensing upgrade for the city's existing CityWorks platform due to the acquisition of a new sewer truck. Total cost not to exceed $9,816.25; Approval of professional services proposal with security compliance associates for services related to the review, modification, enhancement, and development of the city's existing cybersecurity controls. Total cost not to exceed $19,520. Approval of master agreement with DTE Electric Company for municipal street lighting to improve the lighting distribution on Wayne Road between Warren and Joy Roads. Total cost not to exceed $45,536. Approval of proposal with Manitou Incorporated for the comprehensive organizational study of the fire department. Terms of the agreement shall commence immediately and will expire upon completion of satisfactory services in an amount not to exceed $41,395. That does conclude approval of the consent calendar moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Councilwoman Sampie, supported from Councilman Hornbuckle. Are there any discussion? Is there any discussion? You have discussion? Councilwoman Sampie, you have discussion?
No, I have no discussion.
Who did? I apologize.
You did, sorry, my apologies.
Okay. I'll ask again. Any other discussion? All right, any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item 1. Public hearing for the 2023-2024 Community Development Black Grant Home Annual Plan. This hearing date was set March 20, 2023.
So moved.
Motion from Pro Tem Murkowski.
No.
Nope, sorry, this is a public hearing.
Open it up, public hearing.
Public hearing, you're right.
Oh, the public hearing, sorry, you're right.
All right, this is a public hearing. Everybody has the opportunity to speak, the three minutes for this particular item. Is there anybody on my right? Is there anybody on my left? Sir?
I'm Arthur Warren, I'm chairperson of the Citizens Advisory Committee to Block Grant, Citizens Advisory Commission. And I just want to point out, as we move through this, at this study session in regards to this, and there was a document that came from the federal government in regards to how the city was doing in regards to block grant programs, particularly around the housing issue. And it labeled three cities, Redford, Livonia, and Westland. And those recommendations were, were these welcoming cities. In other words, how we apply our grants for the housing, real estate agents and stuff, how to begin to sell houses in the cities. The city of Redford was deemed by the federal government through HUD as a welcoming community. The city of Westland was also deemed by the federal government as a welcome community. The city of Livonia was deemed as a non-welcoming community because it has serious problems with people of color and other ethnic diversity issues. So, I just want to applaud, applaud, it has come from the council and previous administrations, and hopefully this administration that comes into being, that we will continue on this path of being a welcoming city and providing low-cost and any-cost homes to all people. And I think that we've done this on a pretty good track, and particularly with the leadership of Ms. Joanne Campbell over here, and our commission, that we've been able to achieve this. And so, I just want to point that out. And I also want to point it out that I did attend the Livonia City Council meeting, where they did vote down the, they voted down the, golly, I can't even think of it, but the
Diversity?
Diversity, equity, and inclusion kind of things in Livonia. So, they voted that down five to two. Even though, despite various arguments from other industries who came in and said they needed this to hire people, the council still said that they would, they wanted to continue on this path of being non-welcoming. So, that if anybody walks up here and starts bragging about Livonia, HUD says, "It ain't so."
Thank you, sir. Is there any input? Any other comment on the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilman McDermott. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? You dissent?
No, I have discussion.
Well, you have discussion. I apologize, Councilwoman Sampie.
Do you have a discussion?
I don't think you can discuss a hearing, yeah.
During the hearing.
During the hearing, not when there's a motion to close. So, I apologize. Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item 1A. Adoption of prepared resolution and authorization of execution of letters of understanding with city unions to create a Juneteenth city holiday.
Is there a motion?
Motion to table. Support.
Mr. Clerk, roll call. Motion to table.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Pro Tem Murkowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampie.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The item is tabled. New business, item 1B. Approval of request to change the scheduled June 19, 2023 city council meeting to Tuesday, June 20, 2023 at 7:00 PM per council policies, Article 5, Section 1B.
Motion to table. Support.
Motion to table from Councilman Godbout, supported from Councilman Hersberg. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Pro Tem Murkowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampie.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously to table. New business, item 2. Nomination of member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term with the term to expire May 6, 2026. Current ZBA Chairperson David Rappaport has submitted a letter requesting consideration for reappointment.
Support.
This is nominations.
Nominations.
I'd like to nominate David Rappaport.
Motion to close nominations.
There's a motion to close nominations from Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Supported by Councilman McDermott. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item 3. Appointment of member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term, term to expire May 6, 2023. David Rappaport has been nominated.
So moved.
Support.
Motion from Pro Tem Murkowski, supported from Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion?
Yes, please.
Council, Pro Tem?
I'm speaking today in support of David Rappaport. He's been a fantastic member of our Zoning Board of Appeals. He makes his, well, he's a lawyer. He's an attorney by train, right?
We won't hold that against him.
We won't hold it against him. But however, for the Zoning Board of Appeals, it's a desired skill for that board, and I just always appreciate everybody's service to our community to make it a better place. So, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent?
Yep.
Oh, no, he doesn't have it. Mayor, did you have something you wanted to offer, or no?
Oh, just, yeah, thank you very much, Council President. Just that, we're looking for approval on David Rappaport tonight. He's served, I believe, since 2013. He's only missed like one meeting. Guy's a wealth of knowledge, does a great job on both ZBA and planning, so we're asking for his support tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. As a reminder, this was also the council appointment to the ZBA. So, very good. Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Godbout.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo my colleagues' comments in regards to Mr. Rappaport. He does a great job on both the planning and the ZBA. He also is involved in other projects throughout the city. He's most recently sat on our zoning appeals, or the zoning rewrite committee, and provided a lot of valuable input as part of that process as well. So, thank you for your willingness to continue to serve, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you, Councilman Godbout. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously. Mr. Rappaport, please stand up and be recognized.
New business, item 4. Approval of authorization of the use of $6,000 as a local match to SEMCOG grant, and if awarded, hmm, there will be adoption of an accompanying resolution to show support for the initial phase of the Michigan Avenue Innovation Network project.
So moved. Support.
All right, there's motion from, motion from Councilwoman Sampie, supported from Councilman McDermott. Mo?
I don't have anything further on this, but I guess I could just say that there are a group of communities along the Michigan Avenue corridor stretching from the city of Wayne all the way to Dearborn that have been meeting for, gosh, probably on and off for maybe five years, six years. It was started by the city of Dearborn, when I was in Dearborn, and then kind of stopped for a little while, and then recently got picked up, spearheaded by Canton Township, to study Michigan Avenue transitioning over into more of a electric vehicle and automated roadway. So, this is going to be a multi-phase project. The first phase here, that all of the communities have collectively agreed on, is to hire a consultant using SEMCOG funds, which we are hopeful to be awarded, and then accompanying that with some local fund, match funding from each of the communities, to do an initial phase that will study the existing infrastructure along Michigan Avenue, and then leverage that understanding in hopes of engaging MDOT and other industry leaders around automated transportation along Michigan Avenue.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilman McDermott?
Yeah, just real quick, thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mo, for the explanation on that. I also had the chance to talk with Supervisor Graham Hudak over in Canton Township, and I know this is something that they're helping us spearhead over there, and I think that as autonomous driving electric cars become more prevalent in our society and community, Michigan Avenue is such a big corridor that runs through the city of Westland. I think we want to be on top of that, and on top of any potential future, you know, grants and opportunities to transform that Michigan Avenue corridor, in a number of perspectives, not only from, you know, an economic development perspective, but from the roadway itself and how people travel down Michigan Avenue. So, I'm really excited that we're kind of in the infancy stages of this, you know, Michigan Avenue evaluation, but excited that we're moving forward on some future technology that we can put to our use here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you. Through the chair to Mo, I believe the total cost of this was $50,000 for the, using the grant, and we're going to put up $6,000. What's the plan if we don't get that SEMCOG grant? Are we going to get that $6,000 back? Is that going to go unspent, or are we still going to move forward?
So, we won't touch the $6,000 if we don't receive the SEMCOG grant. We will, as, as a partnership with these communities, pursue other grant opportunities and probably come back to the council and ask for a similar type match, which most grants require a match, so...
By chance, do you happen to know when SEMCOG will make that allocation?
I don't know for certain, but probably in June. I don't know why that month stands out. We have been awarded this grant in the past as a, as a single community, and I think that's when we were awarded the grant in the past.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item 5. Adoption of prepared resolution to authorize the allocation of $418,140 in ARPA funds for additional building and property improvements at the police station.
Motion from Councilwoman Sampie, supported from Pro Tem Murkowski. Director Barrow?
We had a very lengthy study session, and I believe all of the questions that council presented were discussed. To bring those projects to completion in a timely manner, the facility department does require those funds.
All right, is there any discussion from the maker or supporter? All right, any discussion from the council? Councilman Godbout?
Thanks. I will not be supporting this additional expenditure on utilizing the ARPA funding for $418,000. And the reason for my reluctance or lack of support for this was, we had originally allocated a significant 1.25 million roughly of ARPA funding to, that was supposed to cover this project as part of that funding. The previous administration decided to utilize some of that allocation on other items outside of this that was also under the blanket resolution that was passed that we allocated this money for. Based off of the numbers that were presented because of material costs and inflation, the actual number that this portion of the original allocation would have gone up by was $132,000 or $138,000 for the facade improvement to the front and the parking lot enhancements at the police station. So, and, you know, we're, we are supposed to be the checks and balances. The previous administration spent the money elsewhere, and now we're coming back looking for more money because we spent it elsewhere. There's no checks and balances, there's just checks from the council. And, you know, I'm sure the administration could find the money elsewhere within the money that's already been allocated. You know, we allocated 5.8 million, yes, it's for operations and supposedly, but that money hasn't been spent yet. That was already allocated, and there's been And there's been little to no research done on what, if any, of that money could be reallocated to cover this shortfall on the, the police station project. Don't get me wrong, we need to do this, okay? It needs to get done. But I don't believe that council is responsible and should be responsible for the negligence of the administration and just write another check. There's got to be some accountability for the money. And instead, we're just going to write another check for $400,000 because it's not my money. So I, I am, will be dissenting on this additional allocation because I believe there is money elsewhere within the budget, or the administration could find money somewhere else in the budget to cover this expense. That's all.
Steve Smith?
Yes. Through the chair to answer a couple of the comments by Councilman Godbell. The original ARPA resolution was followed, and the additional monies that were needed or that were spent were on a couple of other projects along the way. And also with regards to the police station, and I don't know if this was mentioned, but I know it was mentioned in the study session, those projects were, that came in over what we originally anticipated. So the money was spent on what the original council resolution authorized. So I just want to make that clear.
Is there any other discussion? Councilman Godbell?
Go to you first.
Pro Tem?
Thank you, Council President. You know, I, I share people's frustration.
Oops, I apologize. I was hitting the wrong button.
Make me tap my mic. I share and everyone's frustration, certainly, you know, it felt a little bit like a gotcha moment, right? I think all of us up here kind of have that sentiment. The problem was there was a blanket resolution made, and it was spent other, under, excuse me, that allocation. But when we talk about checks and balances, I think the one thing that we have to recognize as council is that we also approve the payment of vouchers, which identifies all of the spending. So though it didn't necessarily say boards and dashers or security cameras for PD, we did approve those voucher line items. So in effect, it was checked and balanced. It was, and perhaps by our own hands. So, you know, I think the, the important thing here is, is that we've established as a council a way forward of how we would like requests for allocations to be brought to us that outline all of the itemized spending that will be spent. And should we see anything that does not fall under that scope or is excessive, we have the ability to pull that back. And in fact, for this new amount of $418,140,000, there were some clawbacks that were being presented. Some of those clawbacks included things that are on an annual basis of repair for items. And that's really not what the spirit of ARPA money is for in our community. However, knowing that there is a, a good estimate of a 20-year lifespan for our police department, I think it would be very myopic of us at this point not to be doing the improvements and especially to their parking lot that is in such disarray at this time. Now, we can charge the administration for finding that other money, and we can look for it. But what we have to recognize is that those infrastructure repairs need to be made. And then, you know, so let's move forward and get those infrastructure repairs made today so that we have a 20-year building. But let's also just work together and be more cognizant of what we are approving when we make a blanket statement in the future.
Councilwoman Sampey? Did you have your lay-in?
I did. I don't know if Councilman Godbell wants to go. So we just had a very lengthy study session to cover this topic. There was a lot of questions that I felt personally that were answered. One of the things that Councilwoman Rakowski brought up, which I actually applaud Director Barra for providing this, is he gave us a color-coded, again, I'm about transparency, I'm going to show you what was, if you were not at the meeting, what was shared with us. So as Councilwoman Rakowski mentioned, there were items that were clawed back, and it came to a subcommittee, so it was vetted and, and really valued out on what was important and maybe what could be used with other funds. So with that being said, you know, I, I think for us to, to kind of knock the project down and say, well, we need to find the money elsewhere, is pretty inefficient as us, as a body, because I do feel that the administration now is trying to move forward in a very transparent, transparent manner with giving us what we asked for and giving us what was needed. So I am going to be in support of this because I do feel in us as a body to, to say, just go find the money, that's, that's not something I would support because there are funds that we need to look at other projects as well, too. So I'm hopeful that my colleagues will agree and we can begin the project. It sounds like, according to Director Barra, they're going to hit the ground running tomorrow. So the project's going to get done pretty quickly, and our police absolutely need the enhancement to their parking lot, if you've been there, in addition to their lobby.
Is there any other discussion? Councilman Hirschberg?
Thanks, Council President. I have to agree with my colleague, Councilman Godbell, on this one. I mean, to make a long story short, council was given the breadcrumbs of the ARPA funds to allocate, barely anything that we're allowed to discuss and allocate ourselves. The rest goes to the executive branch. And now basically we're being forced to use it. We're having a study session right before the meeting. The conversation was still going at five minutes to seven. We had to be respectful to the council meeting time and stop. And we were told time and time again, we're not going to be doing these study sessions right before the vote. You know, it's ridiculous that we're promised that year after year. We have no time to take this information back to our constituents and see how they feel about it. And again, we're getting the breadcrumbs here. We're being put into a corner and saying, we have, we have to do this because of the time constraints. Yeah, the project needs to get done, but there's tons of other ARPA funds out there in the general fund in the budget that could be used for it, not what council's looking at. So I won't be in support. Thank you.
Any other discussion before I go back to Councilman Godbell? Councilman Godbell?
That was so long that Steve said something, I almost, I forgot what it was. Just that, you know, like I said, there's, there's no question that this needs to get done. That, that, that is not the issue. It's never been the issue. But why was this, you know, back when we had the administration's first rollout of his plan for the ARPA funding, the police station was one of the top items addressing the, the completion of the project at the police station was one of the top projects that was listed, along with Fire Station Two and Fire Station Four. So, but instead of making that a priority, we made the ice arena and the golf course the priority and spent the money there first and are now coming back because we spent all the money over there and we need more money to do what was and should have been our top priority, which was fixing the police station. So we do get another 20 years' worth of life out of it. But again, there's no accountability. We just, we'll write more checks. That's all.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbell?
No.
Councilman Hirschberg?
No.
Councilman Hornbuckle?
Yes.
Councilman McDermott?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Pro Tem Rakowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampey?
Yes.
President Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item six. Adoption of prepared resolution authorizing North Brothers Ford to apply for a special one-day liquor license to provide alcohol during their annual 4K event on May 13, 2023 at Central City Park.
Motion from Councilwoman Sampey, supported from Councilman Hirschberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Oops. I apologize, Councilman Godbell. Councilman Godbell, please.
You know, I'm going to support this resolution, you know, but I, I find it interesting that they're, they're going to have a liquor license at a 5K event.
It's huge.
It's, it's, it's the first, this will be the first, and I've run several, or walked several 5Ks. As I get older, I, I tend to walk more than I run anymore.
You might need it, though.
This will be the first one that I can recall that'll have alcohol at the event. So, yeah, I'm going to support it. That's why we're all going.
All right, all right, all right. Let's rein it in. All right, is there any other discussion?
I'll just add to that. It's actually been growing in popularity, I've been seeing it, and then they've been doing the .5K with the beer at the end of it. So at least I commend them going a whole, you know, 5K before giving them the beer.
Point five?
Point five, yeah, that's a joke. Point 5K.
Mayor, did you have something?
Yes, Council President, just briefly. I was, when this first came forward, I met with Doug North from North Brothers Ford. They do a great job in our community, big supporters of the city of Westland and the overall community. I was, I was a little bit shocked as well. But he did say that, you know, they're looking for just other ways to kind of generate buzz around, no pun intended, I swear I didn't come up with that, generate, you know, excitement about the event. They did move the time as well to try to, you know, do the 5K and hopefully keep people around. So hoping that people get out and support the event, whether you're drinking alcohol or, or walking or running the 5K. So even if you can't come out, maybe share the event, they're looking to, you know, get the numbers back to pre-COVID numbers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item seven. Approval of site plan for proposed Carley Court Single Family Residential Subdivision between Cherry Hill and Palmer on the east side of Schuman. This is planning department number 2070A. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements or recommendations.
Motion from Councilman Godbell, supported from Councilman Hirschberg. Mo?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, council members. Good evening, residents in the audience and at home. The subject site here is located east of Schuman. This is between Cherry Hill and Palmer. The site is made up of 18 buildable lots that are all zoned R5 Single Family Residential. They're outlined there on your screen in yellow. A land division was approved back in 2002 by the city council to create these existing lots. Petitioner today is requesting site plan approval to construct 16 single-family homes at the site. Two of the existing lots, as I mentioned earlier, there's 18, will be dedicated to a stormwater detention pond. Adjacent land uses and zoning on all sides of the property are all R5 Single Family Residential as well and developed by single-family dwellings. The 2018 future land use map in the master plan also designates these parcels as single-family residential. Some site data pertaining to the site plan and project itself. The subject site contains an existing road. You can kind of see it there on the aerial. That was constructed back in, near 2002. Obviously, it was, the subdivision was never developed. This will be inspected by city engineering and eventually become a city road once the project is completed. The development will contain concrete sidewalks and street trees as required for any residential subdivision or development, rather, of this size. The petitioner proposes to construct a variety of three different home types. These are all in your backup, but I'll go through them on the screen real quick. This is an Ashton named model. This is the Auburn model, and this is the Ranch Tadmore model. They all have varying, obviously, stories, square footage. They're all three bedrooms, and they vary in baths and garages as, as you saw on the screen. Homes will be constructed with partial brick exterior only on the front side. The zoning ordinance requires brick on all four sides up to the top of the first floor. Therefore, the developer is asking for a waiver from this requirement. We've provided this waiver to a couple other developments in town that have come before you. And finally, the planning commission did hold a public meeting on this and is recommending approval to you, and so is the administration. The Schaefer Development Team, who is proposing this project, is here today and can help answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Very good. Why don't you guys come up? Come to the lectern here.
All right, well, good evening, members of the planning commission. My name's Aaron Schaefer.
City Council.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm thinking it's April 5th here.
Well, you already screwed up. Sorry, I, I had a light, I had a light dinner, so I, my mistake.
Good evening, members of City Council. My name's Aaron Schaefer. I'm with Schaefer Development, or a residential and multifamily real estate developer out of Metro Detroit, Farmington Hills specifically. This is my father, Steve Schaefer. You probably remember my father as a familiar face. He actually worked alongside Polty Homes in developing the single-family residential community off of Joy Road. Mr. Ayub was correct. This site does contain 18 home sites. However, due to the location of the basin, it straddles between two lots, we are going to propose 16 homes here. The homes range from 1,343 square feet, that is the ranch home, all the way up to 1,566 square feet. These units will either be one-story ranch or two-story homes. Our main demographic we're trying to attract here are active adults or individuals 55-plus and older whose kids have, you know, left the nest, you know, gone to college, gone to trade school elsewhere and are no longer living at the home. So this affords the opportunity for these individuals to downsize yet age in place in the community they call home. The two-story homes are more positioned toward younger couples or younger families. The rationale for the partial brick on the front elevation is to keep these homes attainable and within an affordable price range. I mean, I'm in my 20s right now, and I can't tell you how many people my age struggle to make the payments work on a for-sale, single-family home. They're really forced into the rental lifestyle, and, and that's something we're looking to change here with these, with this type of housing. We're trying to create something that is a little smaller, but at the end of the day is attainable so that individuals my age, as well as older adults, can have a affordable home to live in. Just to give you a little bit of a history on the property, it was developed back in the early 2000s. All of the municipal, as well as franchise utilities, besides DTE, Detroit Edison are in place. We're currently working with both DTE and consumers to get the transformers for the community, as well as the individual homes ordered and in place because there is a very long lead time with that. You know, COVID has definitely not been kind to the, you know, the building materials sector, and this is one thing we're getting done on the front end to ensure that we have them in a timely manner. And the last thing before I turn this off to, to you individuals for any questions you may have is that we are looking to pull all 16 building permits at once. So we're looking to build these homes and then put them up for sale. It's not going to be a spec home, but they'll be already built for individuals to sell. And with that, I will open up any questions you may have.
Wonderful, thank you. I think that's the most comprehensive explanation we've ever received. I'm going to first go to the motion maker, Councilman Godbell, for any questions or comments.
Thanks. I just want to thank you for finally making this subdivision a reality. You know, I was here when we first approved the, the subdivision going in, in 2002. And, you know, it just, it's sat dormant for years, year, 20 years, 21 years at this point. So it's, it's nice to finally see that it's, it's going through. And I applaud you for, you know, I, I drove by the site again the other day, and, you know, you're, you're right where that basin is and knowing that you have to have the stormwater retention, it's, it's a perfect spot. You, you lose two, two buildable lots, but you really wouldn't have had two buildable lots there anyway. So thank you for, for making that consideration as, as part of this. And in regards to the, the brick... And in regards to the brick, you know, all the way around, if you drive the neighborhoods around there, they're far from having brick all the way around on all of those homes in that surrounding area. This will be a definite upgrade in that section, and I wish you the best of luck. Thanks.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
We have comment from the supporter, Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, and thanks for bringing this forward. I just want to ask real quick, how soon do you intend on breaking ground, and how long will the construction time take? Are you building all 16 at once?
No, we'll start with five and then move onward. But we'd like to pull all building permits at once. Assuming all goes well with engineering, we'd be looking to at least break ground probably later this summer, if not fall of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Well said. Councilman McDermott?
Well, good evening. First off, thank you guys for the development. I live literally right around the corner on Forest from Carley Street, so appreciate the development, appreciate this getting done after, you know, as Councilman Godbout said, a long time coming. My one question was, though, you have a, and I know it actually fits the aesthetic in the neighborhood, because a lot of the homes on my street are one-car garages, but I know a lot of developers were getting away from the one-car garage model. Why the decision on some of the two-story homes to build the one-car garage model as opposed to a two-car garage model?
All depends on buyer preference, so maybe, you know, a 55-plus who still has, you know, family, or, you know, maybe is a snowbird and comes up here during the summer months and tries to traverse further south. We're just trying to mix it up so that we can attract as much of a buyer pool as possible. The two-story units with a one-car garage will be kept at a minimum, if not any at all. We just wanted to have that in there as an optional alternative.
Okay, great, well, I really appreciate the development, so thank you guys, this is a long time coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Sampson?
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen, for being here. I think anytime that we can add roofs in the city is always a positive thing. I just had a few questions in regards to kind of the setup of, I guess, what I would consider subdivision. Are you guys planning to have like an HOA, or is it just going to be independent homes?
So we're looking to establish an HOA to maintain, to handle and maintain the stormwater basin.
Okay.
When we were actually combing through the title work, this was something that we discovered actually a couple of days before the planning commission meeting. Back in 2006, there were easements that the city of Westland approved for the rear yard swales, because all of the rear yard stormwater swales are in, as well as the stormwater basin itself. But we are looking to have an HOA set up, because even in that '06 attachment to the title work, it did state that the developer would either be required to maintain it or set up an HOA to handle the future maintenance of said basin. So that is the extent of the homeowners association, is to manage that basin and the rear yard swales as well.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the clarification, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I have to live in a new choice, I had to ask that question. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Pro Tim?
Hello again. I'm just really excited to see Carley Court being developed, and, you know, it's such a reasonable-sized development that I don't think that you'll have too many obstacles in your way of completing it. That's one of the things that we have found in our community, is people want to undertake these very large-scale developments, which we all love and we love the ambition of, but they never really come to fruition. So hearing your plan that you want to capture all 16 building permits and have a five-by-five plan, I think is really smart, and they look like just beautiful homes, and I think you really have been really thoughtful about the individual buyers of that. So I don't think you really have a problem occupying it, but can't wait to see you break ground.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Well, I'll ask real quick. Two things. First of all, you came here over Carley Court, I mean, that street's right to the southwest, you could have doubled down, so come back hopefully in a year with that one, we hope to see it. Lastly, as when you're doing the development, as I ask everybody, please be good stewards and good neighbors.
Absolutely.
Understand that we do have sound ordinances, and when you can and cannot make noise, so that people who can't need to sleep do, I'm not saying you're going to do that, just reminding you to please do it, because what they're going to do is they're going to call all of us, and then it's just not going to be pretty for anybody.
Absolutely.
So please do that, remember to be good stewards, and I would appreciate that.
Make sure to get a 24-by-36 board that's waterproof and nail it right, you know, at the end of the cul-de-sac, so all the trades read it.
All right, very good. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent?
I just wanted to say, you know, I appreciate your staff has been excellent. When we first came in, you know, planning, building, engineering, were all very helpful. They misplaced the plans, so the engineering had been approved, but they couldn't find the plans, and everybody in the city's been extremely helpful to try to help us along to get us to this point, so.
Well, maybe they didn't misplace the plans, maybe they just had some corrections to make. Any other dissent? Or, excuse me, any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much for the time this evening.
New business. Item eight. Approval of proposed land division 6555 North Newburg Road. This is planning department number 1701E. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental recommendations and requirements, and further, if approved, directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Motion from Councilman Hersberg?
Support.
Supported from Councilman Hornbuckle. Mo?
Thank you, Council President. This item and the next item are related, so I just wanted to state that out loud. This is the land division, and the following one is the rezoning. So this subject property is located at the southwest corner of Newburg and Warren, just south of Anna's House, where Lowe's exists, the home improvement retail warehouse. The property is currently zoned CB3, general commercial business district, and the petitioner tonight is requesting a land division to create an outlot in front of the Lowe's Home Improvement Store along Newburg there, where that red outline exists, to develop a Take Five Oil Change shop. That's a national franchise that does oil changes. The proposed parcel does comply with all of the zoning requirements in the CB3 and CB4 district, which is what they're requesting next. The parcel is 26, approximately 26,000 square feet, and if approved, there will be a variety of access easement agreements to provide access from the various drives that exist for Lowe's that will be granted by Lowe's. So similar to the previous case, the planning commission reviewed this at their April 5th meeting and is recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions, and I know the representatives of the development team are here today as well.
Well, if I could invite them up, that'd be great. We never let you out of the hot seat here. Mo does best to soften us up.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Drew Barclay. I'm civil engineer with Driven Brands Take Five. Have with me Jack Reiser, who's one of our regional managers of the Take Five Oil Change. We appreciate your time this evening. I know it's getting late, so I'll be brief. Driven Brands is the parent company of Take Five. We own Take Five Car Wash, Oil Change, Mineiki, Mako, Auto Glass Now. We're the largest aftermarket auto service company in North America, and tonight we hear something that's pretty typical for us is to develop an outparcel of Lowe's sites. And here, we're just wanting to move ahead with not only subdivision, but the rezoning so that we can start the site plan process for our Take Five Oil Change. I'll be here, I'm here to answer any questions you might have, and also, Jack, any specific questions regarding site-specific items like operation and so forth.
Okay, very good. Anything from the maker? All right, anything from the supporter? All right, any discussion? Any discussion? You're not done yet, you've got another agenda. Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Don't go anywhere.
I won't.
New business. Item nine. Approval of proposed rezoning from CB3, general commercial business district to CB4, vehicle service district, 6555 North Newburg Road. This is planning department number 1701F. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental recommendations and requirements, and further, if approved, directs the city attorney to draft the necessary ordinance amendment.
Motion from Councilman Hersberg? Supported from Pro Tim Rukowski. Mo?
Okay, thanks, Council President. I will not repeat any information I just said that was exactly the same, but I guess it's important here for you and the audience specifically to note some adjacent land uses and zoning. So property to the north is Zone CB1, low-intensity commercial business district, that's Anna's House here. Property to the south is undeveloped, that's zoned R1, single-family residential. Property here to the west, can't see it on the map, but it's zoned industrial, that's in an industrial subdivision back there, zoned I1, and is developed by a variety of industrial uses back there. Properties to the east, this is Culver's, zoned commercial, Myers, zoned commercial, and then we have Harvest Bible Church over here, which is also zoned commercial. The entire property here outlined in yellow, the future land use designation in the master plan is shop and dine district. The property is located, as you may know, in a commercial shopping district, close to multifamily and single-family and commercial developments. Interesting fact you probably know, the CB4 district is proposed to be eliminated in the zoning ordinance, so even though they're requesting for land entitlements today, this property to be rezoned to CB4, the CB4 district will be removed. The minor vehicle service uses, such as oil changes, will be moved to the CB3 district, but they'll be special land uses. So if in a few months from now they came before us, it would be a special land use instead of a rezoning of site plan, and while they still have to do the land division. But something I thought I should mention to you, finally, I just want to read from the master plan what the designation states for shop and dine district, quote unquote. This classification intends to further define and enhance the existing district. The primary uses should be commercial, with a focus on retail services and entertainment. The desire is to make this area a regional destination. So about six months ago, when these individuals approached us, the economic development director and I were a bit hesitant, because it was an auto-oriented uses use, and we've all talked about auto-oriented uses not being preferred, especially in our shop and dine district. However, recognizing it's a national tenant, the city administration worked, the developers, specifically on the site plan and the way that the building is designed, and the quality of materials that are used. I don't think this rendering really does the materials justice, but they are using quality brick and stone materials to construct this building, and we worked with them as well on the site plan, which they've designed a quality and probably best-as-they-can site plan, working together, and they've done everything we've asked them so far. So we recommended approval to the planning commission, and the planning commission unanimously recommended approval to you at its April 5th planning commission meeting. So that's all I have, I did want to share that, that we acknowledged the auto-oriented use and did work with them on creating the best site plan and the best building aesthetic for you. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mo. Anything from the maker? Anything from the supporter? Pro Tim?
Thank you, Council President. I will be in support of this. I, you know, to Director Ayub's point, we all have been a little gun-shy about all of the extra automotive uses, but your building looks like the prettiest oil change place I've ever seen.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
You know, so.
Our techs do a great job.
Yeah, it's fantastic, so one-stop shopping, go get, go to Lowe's and get the oil changed, and then stop and get some lunch at Anna's. So thank you for investing in Westland, and it's exciting to have a national partner, you know, a big chain coming in.
We appreciate the opportunity, and like I said, you know, we're a national company, we like to go into communities, communities where we feel like we can become a part of community, and not just build something. We see these as investments in us, but also in the neighborhood. You know, we want, you know, we rely on the neighbors for our business, so we want to be good neighbors. So we appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sampson?
Yeah, thank you for investing in the community. So does Take Five mean, is it a five-minute oil change? Is that, is that the mantra? You're in the hot seat.
All right, so Take Five was acquired by Driven Brands. Before that, it was called Rapid Oil Change. They pride themselves on getting people in and out quickly, sit in your car, you don't even have to get out and get into a waiting room or anything like that, so, and to take less time away from the consumer to get on about with their day. And so Take Five is kind of, Take Five to Get It Done kind of thing. It's not going to be five minutes, it might be like nine. But, but the moniker of five is sensible, we're quick.
Okay, well, I'll be in support of it. I was hoping for that five minutes, because we're all busy, but thank you again for choosing Westland, too. It's, again, also, it's good to see some chains coming in here and expanding out and investing in our community.
All right, very good. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Now, for some reason, it fell off the agenda, but we always have public comments, so it is there, so I didn't see it.
Really?
I think it fell off in the print, so it goes with the 10 right there, so. Whatever, stuff happens, but don't worry, we're going to do them.
Let's give them a shot at it anyway.
Well, there's this whole law thing, you know, that we have to be compliant. Anyway. Everyone speaking for the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker, will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed, or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my left? Yes?
Lori Wilson, Westland. My power went off at 4:00 this morning, came back on at 10:30 this morning. It was cold, it's HE double hockey sticks in there. Second thing, actually, is the most important one, this Juneteenth thing, I'm glad you removed it, and I'm glad you're going to table it, until there is some kind of conversation with the residents, as Mr. Wong calls us, the Afro-American residents or the black residents. I don't think you, as a panel, you shouldn't seat, or you should not think about giving, because to me, it was rather an affront, because nobody spoke to us, nobody asked us what we wanted. It was like you were giving us a gift, and I'm like, so I was kind of perplexed by that. So that's all I have to say. But I didn't have any power, and I really would like to have that stipend from DTE to get me a generator.
Anybody on my right? Yes?
Thank you for recognizing public comments. This is Emily Baumann, resident of Westland. I really am appreciating the study sessions, I'm glad, I do wish they were more well-attended, it'd be nice, I know some are, but some aren't. And I also, I want to make just, I appreciate that some of the comments that were made in the study session were brought to the public forum here, the secondary public forum here as well, so I just wanted to kind of say that. While I was listening in there, all I could think about was a story about my husband sharing with me when he was a boy, and his, he asked his dad for money to go get new shoes for sports, and so his dad said, okay, here, and he gave him a check and signed it. His dad was flipped when the check came back, and he had bought over $100 pair of shoes, and this would have been, gosh, not to age myself, but probably like 40 years ago, so that was a lot, really expensive pair of shoes. So it just, that's a story that just kept in my head, so I just, I appreciate the fine detail that's going into looking at some of these things and determining what, you know, how this taxpayer money is being spent in our city. So I definitely appreciate that, and that, and the transparency that is going on. I thought about the voucher comment, and I guess... I thought about the voucher comment, and I guess that would be after, it's already, everything's already paid. I mean, obviously scrubbing that is really helpful, but it's already, it's already happened, right? I think it's, you know, if the voucher are paying something, that already happened. So I guess I just think about, you know, the, the ahead-of thing, and I think the detail you guys have done in the last couple of sessions where you are breaking down, you know, fine and looking at those various things, I think that's really critical, because I think that's all, what all of us would do with, especially with someone else's money, is, you know, hopefully with our own money, but also with someone else's money, really being able to have that, that scrutiny, and sometimes having to say no. You know, you sometimes have to say no to that new video game that my son wants to get, because no, it's not there, you just can't do it. Because you'd have to say no, you know, say yes there, you have to say no somewhere else. So I definitely appreciate that. With that, I also was thinking, you're still having study sessions on the future budget, and if I understand correctly, and I could be wrong, there's money that's been put into the budget going forward, so there's opportunity to look in the future budget for the possible, you know, recovery. I don't know if that's incorrect or not, but there is some discussion, you know, I don't know if that's a discussion that can happen with that. But I think with that, I really appreciate everything you do, and I could, I will mention that I did see that this was a 4K, not a 5K, so that would make sense when you're having a little out call, you might not make the full 5K. So anyway, thanks, have a great night.
Thank you. Anybody on my left? Sir?
Hi, everybody. I'm here to talk about dogs. So, I know, right? So I had an experience today with Officer Bryn Minton and another undisclosed officer at the Westland today, and I just want to talk about, appreciate the empathy that the City of Westland, as much as public safety has for dogs, this is a unique situation with this dog running down Newburg and Marquette scared and frightened. The police officer had absolutely no clue what I was doing, he had no idea I was on the phone with Bryn, but had empathy to the situation out of, you know, and when saw what I was exactly trying to do, tossed his lights on, helped me get out to that thing. You know, it is so important in the city to have empathy and support for animals, you know, of any situation, and I just wanted to say that when we talk about all of the things that the city and things like that do, I think it is heck of important to know that you guys are just as important in saving animals as everybody else. But honestly, Officer Bryn, as I hear everybody refers to her, she's a rock star, and so I just want to say, as a resident, as some of you know, I work rescuing dogs, that's my calling in some respects, and it is sometimes so hard to find help within cities when we are trying to take, to get a dog out of a situation, and to know that the city, as the police, has our support, it's just great. So thank you very much.
Anybody on my right? Mr. Powell? I'll get you next, Ray.
I just want to come back to the thing I talked about, I talked about the, initially I talked about the consent calendar, but I realize that that had already been decided and done, but I hope in the future that we can take a look at possibly putting a pause or making some sort of a public statement about waiting, you know, demanding answers from DTE, because I also lost power today as well, but I have backup power, but not everybody does. But, you know, I always seem to be talking about water or power, that's weird, but I guess those are important things. But, but that's all I had. I hope we can take a look at possibly pausing any future extra expenditures with DTE, just as maybe that'll take hold, and I know they wouldn't care about $30,000 out of their entire income, but it might, it might do something just to send a message, but that's all I had.
Thank you. Back to my left? Ms. Dale?
Ruth Dale, local historian, Westland. First, an announcement on a historical note. The Southeast Westland Homeowners Association was formed around 1958, 65 years ago, and to my knowledge, it's the longest ongoing homeowners association in our city. This would be the Annapolis Park neighborhood at Middle Belt and Van Born area. Actually, it was formed back when we were Nankin Township in 58. The first president of the association was a Mr. Bill Williams. The current president of the association is with us tonight, Mr. Arthur Warren. On another subject matter, on the darkness issue, Middle Belt Road, south of my suburb, since in my opinion it's a safety issue, it weighs heavily on my heart, that there should be at least one street light at the Middle Belt Bridge over Heinz Strive. Lastly, I still feel the same about the Chiefs. Been moved back up front. I reiterate how important they are to our city. They have so many responsibilities, and the one that, I don't know, it came, stuck in my mind was the decisions, all these decisions that they, they have to make, so important in a crisis and so on, and safety of all the residents every day, 24/7. Thank you.
Ray, I'm just going to call you.
So, diversity, I mean, I've been hearing, you know, I ain't taking no notes tonight, but in my head, but diversity for Livonia, they need to be having diversity like we do here in Westland. Then, thank God, I don't live in Livonia, but I think I need to make an appearance there. But a friend of mine has heard today that he's running for Livonia City Council, and I know he would be good, I hope he gets it, because I know he, he loves diversity like I do, and believes in people, and I believe in people, and I believe in Westland. I spend most of my time here in Westland, at least 70 or 80% of my time here. In Redford, sometime, I'll talk a little bit about Redford for a second, because the street I live on, you know, I dislike how people sometimes just make their own rules when they're driving a car. They'll just look at the stop sign, now just keep going, they'll just hit, oh, thank God you don't live in Westland. I would be complaining, so the next coffee hour with Redford, I guess I'm going to have to bring that up to them, too. This is important to me, rules are the rules. When you see them out there, hey, they should get a ticket if you're going through, and there's kids, that's what I worry about, too. Also, I do have some good news. Anyway, this year has been good for me so far. I have done the Disabilities Awareness Month, we did a video, that video was rocked. I do support Westland Police Department, always will and always will do, and I'm glad that went through tonight, too, to keep the building and the driveway fixed up for them, too, and the fire department. So, anyway, also with this video, right now, I, because I wear so many hats, I've got nominated to go to City of Waterford, being the step of the steplight. That means red carpeting, the bazine, go up there being interviewed and talked, and some other people with different abilities, because years ago, people weren't being looked at that, at their challenges, as their, you know, if they're living a life out there, working in a community like I am, making the differences out there, and I am definitely proud of it. The month of May, I want to talk about mental health, and I have to keep bringing that up once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on my left? Sir?
Just two things, as a member of the Liberator Group, and when we look at what the new housing development that's being planned, that the Liberator Group, along with the students from the Williams D4, we built two houses right there on Hyvingly and Shoemaker. No, they don't have brick in the back, they don't have brick all the way around, I don't know how you let us get away with it, but, and those homes basically sell before we finish building them, so that's a good project area, and I think those homes will sell very well over there. We're creating a new home right over here, right behind the golf course, right off Merriman Road with the students, and that will probably sell. The homes that we're doing in Carver subdivision, not Carver subdivision, Norway subdivision, I'm sorry, they're sold before we even put the pads down. Okay? And so that the homes are selling, and we're getting new residents in. Okay, that's one, that's one aspect. The other aspect is that I attend a lot of community meetings with predominantly Afro-Americans in, and there's still a perception that the police department is still biased towards I just looked at the dashboard today and looked at the number of arrests, and it's almost equal to the number of whites in this city. So I need to get some understanding from the police department of who those people are, whether they're residents or non-residents coming through, so that some truth can be spoken in these meetings, because especially along the Michigan Avenue, Henry Ross, Merriman Quarter, you know you have a, what do you call that? Speed trap there. Yeah, that's your big speed trap there. One year, you wrote, within six months, you wrote 2,000 tickets there, 2,000. And the perception was that in the Afro-American community, that most of those tickets were written on Afro-Americans, which I found out was not to be the case. So we're going to have to update that information, request the police department, mayor, have the police department update that information to me so that the facts can be disseminated in the community of exactly what it is, and particularly around the arrest record, because when I looked at the one today, it was that Westland has a overabundance of domestic violence going on here, and that's the big, some of the biggest arrests that's going on in the City of Westland. But that's not nothing the police can control on a Friday night, but we just need to know what it is and who the entities are, not by name, you know, by ethnic group, or however we can disseminate that, so some facts can be put back in the community at these community meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else in the audience? All right, we'll close citizen comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, President Hart. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight on this beautiful 80-degree spring day. Thank you to the gentleman that got up and spoke about our animal care and rescue, Officer Minton. She is a fantastic resource in our community. She's also assisted by Mark, I don't know Mark's last name, but they both do an incredible job assisting with animal care and rescue in our community, so thank you so much for bringing that up. Also want to congratulate David Rappaport, I'm glad to see you're still here tonight, on his reappearance for the Zoning Board of Appeals, as stated. He doesn't miss many meetings, he serves, wears a lot of hats, served on the ZBA, served on the Planning Commission as well, and also on the Ordinance Steering Committees, not the Ordinance, excuse me, the Zoning Steering Committee. Also want to thank City Council for approval of the following items tonight. The City Works licensing upgrade. This license will allow our new sewer truck to communicate directly into the City Works Work Order Management System as they find issues while inspecting the sewer pipes throughout the city. We allocated this new team, Basement Flooding Mitigation Team, it's going to be a great resource for us to try to get to the bottom of some of these sewer backups in neighborhoods. We also had the Wayne Road Street Lighting Project from War and to Joy. This is going to obviously improve the lighting in that area, provide a better quality lighting, which will enhance visibility and safety for our pedestrian and vehicular traffic. We also had the organizational, yeah, there you go, you can applaud. We also had the organizational study for the fire department. This comprehensive study is going to provide the city and fire department with recommendations for fire department staffing, deployment of resources, station locations, as well as recommendations for replacements of vehicles and equipment. This study will use standards and best practices to assist the department and city in future planning and provision of a comprehensive emergency service to the city of Westland, to the citizens of Westland, excuse me. Really excited to see the, the plan approval of the Carley Court Homes. It was nice to see the property being developed with 16 new family homes. I agree with our council president, it would have been nice if they came with both, both streets, so hopefully that, that street to the west will be, will be coming here forward pretty soon. Just a couple save the dates and some events we have coming up. We have the City of Westland and Wildwood Elementary are going to be partnering up for this year's Earth Day celebration, so please join us this Friday, April 21st, at Wildwood Elementary. We'll be shedding light on the earth-friendly highlights and projects of both the city and the school district. We will be handing out seed packets and LED light bulbs to residents and revealing the special recycle benches that the children of Wildwood Elementary School helped, helped bring to the city as part of their cap collection project. We'll also have some shiny new police vehicles there as well, which I'll talk about in a few minutes here. In partnership with Dedicated Recycling Company, the city is hosting a no-cost electronics recycling event. This event will be held on Saturday, April 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the parking lot of the Westland Recycling Center located at 37137 Marquette. The Westland Rotary K9 Corral Cleanup Day will be held on Saturday, April 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. That's also at 37137 Marquette, so come on out and join the cleanup as we prepare for the anticipated Memorial Day opening. We're getting a lot of questions in my office, I know we're getting a lot of questions on social media, people are very, very excited. A friend of mine sent a picture the other day with her, with her dog on one of those nice days we had, and said, what's the code at the dog park? I want to get in. So people are excited to get in there, and we're excited to show it to the residents. Speaking of the police department, they will be deploying 20 brand-new Ford Explorer Hybrid Patrol Cars along with a one-of-a-kind F-150 Lightning Community Police Vehicle. The patrol cars are hybrid gasoline, electric battery vehicles, which improves fuel economy. These new cars have a modernized graphic scheme and the latest technology and equipment. You guys are really going to like these, these sharp vehicles. If you get a chance to go by the police department, there's a few parked out back, but come to the Earth Day event, and you'll see them in person. Lastly, I just want to take the opportunity to welcome Iroquois Assembly System, which is a world-class automotive supplier to the Westland industrial business community. They have moved into a nearly 4,000-square-foot facility that has been vacant for nearly 12 years. This brings a total of 60 new jobs to the Westland workforce, and we're very, very excited to have them. So as you can see, it's a very, we're going to have a very busy spring and summer here in Westland. If anyone ever has any questions or input or any ideas of all the great things that we have happening, please call my office at 734-467-3200. You can also email us at mayor@cityofwestland.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything from the lawyer today?
No, I've had enough chaps at me by council.
All right, very good. You're off the hook today. All right. We'll begin council comments with Councilman Hersberg.
Thanks, Council President. I don't, I also don't have any further comments this evening, but I would like to congratulate David Rappaport, and thank you for your service, and somebody should have mentioned to him that he didn't have to stay for the whole meeting.
He knows better.
That's it for me. I'll see everyone at our next budget meeting, which is this Saturday at 10:00 a.m., and the public is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Godbout?
I think I've said enough this evening, so we move on.
All right, very good. Councilman McDermott?
Good evening. Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of things here tonight. One, I want to thank Joanne Director Campbell for her work on the CDBG program. We have a phenomenal director in our housing coordinator here, Joanne Campbell, and she does a lot of great work, so thank you for all the work that she puts into our Community Development Block Grant Program here, and I really appreciate all her work. Thank you to Mr. Rappaport for your continued service on the ZBA. You are an immeasurable asset to our community, and we, you know, losing someone like you would be really tough, so we're glad that you're sticking around and wanting to stay in ZBA. So we really appreciate all your service on ZBA, on planning and everything you do here in the Westland community. Regards to ARPA, I think that we're, you know, all PO'd with the way the initial ARPA resolution went down, when we allocated money towards the police station and the ice arena and that the golf course, and that the allocation wasn't used on our main issue, police station first, and was put towards the ice arena and put towards the golf course, and that we weren't prioritizing the police station. I think all of us could have and should have demanded more accountability that we're getting now, more itemization of each of the items, and moving forward, I think we all want that, respectively. In regards to the upper resolution tonight, we can still, as Ms. Baumann asked the question on, we can still look at the budget, it's not a finalized document, it's not been voted on and approved by the council, so we can still take a look at any items in the budget and take money out, add money in, change expenditures in the budget. So we still have that opportunity, independent of this resolution, tonight to be able to do that. But, you know, certainly, I share the sentiment of everybody up here and a lot of folks in the audience and watching at home, that we need to be more diligent and get, you know, that kind of detailed itemization that we've got, and thank you Director Barr for providing us with that here tonight. In regards to the fire department staffing that was approved here with Manitou Consult... In regards to the fire department staffing that was approved here with Manitou Consulting Agency, I'm glad that we're moving forward on this and taking a comprehensive look at fire department staffing. You know, it's my view that we are understaffed in the fire department. I think that the study will come back and probably tell us that, that we need, you know, more person power in our fire department. And, you know, when you, when you talk to the guys, when you talk to the, working on the runs every single day in the fire department, hopping on the rescues and hopping on our engines, they will, I think, echo the sentiment that we are, they are understaffed. In regards to the DTE resolution, I actually had the chance to talk to my friend who's on Farmington City Council, Councilwoman Maria Taylor, and I've had the chance to look at a resolution that they put forward on Farmington City Council. And I know that sometimes resolutions can seem, you know, meaningless and, you know, kind of, you know, empty-suited, and they don't do a whole lot. But, I think it's an important one to move forward on in regards to DTE, because everybody in this community, at one time or another, everybody up here on this council, has faced multiple continued outages and days-long outages. And I think that collectively, communities across Southeast Michigan need to demand more action, to hold DTE accountable, to make sure that DTE is putting more money into the grid and not into their shareholders' back pockets, to make sure that they are taking care of us, their customers, not only their residential customers, but each of their, you know, business customers as well. Because when a business is without power, a restaurant, a small business, somebody's workplace for four, five, six, seven, eight days at a time, they can't function, they can't operate. And it is not fair to expect every resident or every business to go out and spend thousands or tens of thousands of dollars on a, on a whole home or whole business generator. So, I think having a future resolution is a great idea. Mr. Powell, thank you for bringing that up. Do appreciate that. And I'd be happy to share the resolution from, if I haven't already shared it with everybody, from Farmington City Council, and what they put forward as well. And with that, I wish you all a good evening. Treat each other with kindness and respect. And if you need anything from me, I'm available on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott, or as always, via caller text at 734-890-2146, and hope to see you out there this Saturday at our second budget study session. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you, Council President. Hope everyone's doing well. I know it was a longer meeting. When you bake in the study session, it's a long night. So, it's still April, which is Autism Acceptance Month, and I want to always just continue to bring this up, because it is really a passion of mine, and I mentioned this last meeting, but really looking at the inclusivity of our residents and supporting our residents. So, wanted to remind everyone that there will be an autism awareness show that I taped last year. WLND is going to be airing it again. I think it was really well-done, not because I did it, but we had some good guests. We talked a lot about tips and stuff, too, so. And then, last meeting, I talked about the nonprofit Autism Society of Greater Detroit. They are offering free tickets. I wanted to mention this, free Tigers tickets the last Saturday of the month to a Tigers game. They're doing a partnership. It's open to residents of, I mean, all communities, but they really wanted Westland residents to be there in support. So, it would be for the individual that had special needs free, and then a caregiver would be $5. So, I wanted to mention it. If you are interested, you can go to autismsocietygreaterdetroit.org. So, I'll say that one more time, autismsocietygreaterdetroit.org. They have information on their website, so feel free to share this with, you know, loved ones or those that have someone with autism. I just wanted to touch on a few things on the agenda. I know we did talk about the parking lot of the police, and I won't kind of go there, but I wanted to thank our colleagues on the dais for passing that. And then, there was a question about DTE and looking at the streetlights. So, what they're doing right now is they are just replacing the bulbs to be LED-friendly, which will light, I guess, the Wayne Road up a little bit more. My son has friends that actually live at the apartments on Wayne Road, and numerous times, they almost got hit. It's rather dim. So, I'm very happy that we were able to replace them. So, there's going to be 48 lights that are replaced. So, it's not any new builds or anything, but it is replaced. The comments that were made, I think, about, you know, the city council not having say on ARPA, I would just say that it was on the agenda. It was passed unanimously for $12 million, so I think the current administration is going to be more transparent, and I look forward to kind of working through the study sessions on how we can spend that money. I wanted to thank Mayor Lando for being supportive of the idea of creating a relationship with Livonia Public Schools. Westland is really unique in nature. We have students from various different districts in our city. I know Councilwoman Rakowski, we both have students that attend Livonia Public Schools, and we've seen a little bit of a divide. So, Mayor Lando graciously donated a round of golf splash pad, ice rink passes, and mayor for a day, police for a day, and fire for a day. They're doing a First Step Auction Week, so the students of Churchill are raising money for First Step. It's a nonprofit, providing comprehensive services for victims of domestic and sexual violence in Wayne County. The shelter is in Wayne, so the students are really trying to raise money to support that shelter. And Westland is just a first step with kind of supporting initiatives in our Livonia Public Schools, so thank you, Mayor Lando, for being gracious and donating those. I wanted to plug an event, so Uncorked and Untapped is going to be on Friday, April 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Hype Athletics. So, there's going to be a really fun event. All proceeds are benefiting the Wayne Westland Educational Foundation in support of the Wayne Westland Community School District. They're doing a beer and wine sampling, speaking of 5Ks, right, and serving, this is actually fundraiser, so. They're sampling food. They're going to have a DJ and silent auction, so wanted to kind of promote this for them. And then, the next day, after you go and support Wayne Westland Schools, you can head over to John Glenn, and I don't know if there's any, I think there's a few police officers here. They're doing a charity softball game. It's Wesleyan Police versus John Glenn Staff and the Varsity Softball Team on Saturday, April 29th, at 1:00 p.m., which is pretty exciting. I wanted to also congratulate Mr. Rappaport on your appointment, and thank you for sticking with us and being very involved in the board. And I wanted to also mention one more thing. So, weather is starting to warm up, and it means more people out and about. So, over the weekend, I was running errands, and I came across an incident where a driver hit a youth on a bike. And I called EMS immediately, and I stayed with there until the child stayed conscious, and his father came. And luckily, he walked away with just a few staples in his head, which is miraculous in my mind. But, I really, really want to encourage you to just foul the posted speed limits, avoid distracted driving, and if you are out riding a bike, or if you have a child out riding a bike, please remind them to wear a helmet. I know that there's a lot of things that we say, "Well, drivers are distracted," and, you know, "They're speeding and such," but a lot of times, it just comes about, too, where you're riding a bike, and maybe you might kind of veer into the street, and there could be an incident. So, I wanted to just remind you, because the weather is getting warm, and fortunately, he's okay, but it was a pretty scary situation, so wanted to pass a lot of that reminder. So, our next meeting is Monday, May 1st, at 7:00. Again, we do invite residents to come out. If you want to get in touch with me, I'm Councilwoman Melissa Sampe on Facebook. That's my personal Facebook page, and you can reach out to me on my cell phone, 734-637-2078. Until then, be safe and kind with each other, and we'll see you soon.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Thank you. I want to congratulate David Rappaport. I had the opportunity to actually work with him on the planning. He's definitely wealth of knowledge, a great person to ask questions on historical events. So, I'm definitely excited that you're not leaving us. Appreciate all your hard work. Also, I want to thank all the directors that came out this Saturday to the study session and to provide us with information and allow us to ask those tough questions, to understand what's going on. I do want to echo what Mike Kylie here, that we are looking at everything. We are double-checking and making sure that the budget makes sense to all of us up here. The subcommittee is going through and seeing what we can, what we definitely need, or what we can do without. So, I want to assure you that we are doing that and taking that extra step, and as you see, being more transparent. I also want to echo the E Recycle Day this Saturday at the Recycle Center, 37137 Marquette. Make sure you bring all your old electronic equipment, get it recycled properly. And there's another study session this Saturday, 10:00 a.m. Should be a nice, good round of questions as well, and everyone here is invited. And also, thank you, everyone in the audience, for coming out, bringing your questions and ideas to the table, and have a great week. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Pro Tem Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I would like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues in thanking David Rappaport for his continued service to our city. He actually asked to be reappointed, so he's a glutton for punishment, but we'll take it, as long as he'll give it to us. And, you know, I just want to thank my colleagues for an invigored and lively discussion during the study session. I think it's important. You know, we have to continue to have great debate. That's our process here, right? We don't need seven copies of one another, and we all have different perspectives, and that's wonderful. And so, hopefully, we can come to the consensus on things and move the finances along. We do have budget sessions this Saturday and next Saturday. And other than that, just very happy to see some national development happening in our, our community, as well as some new homes. And with that, we'll see you in May. Have a good week.
Thank you, Pro Tem. I'll begin by thanking Councilwoman Sampe for leading us to the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, and to thank David Rappaport, not congratulate him, thank him for coming up and stepping forward, continuing to do the things that you do on behalf of the residents and the city council. So, as you know, the ZBA operates independently of the city council. We appoint them, we give them the trust, and then they have the keys to the kingdom. So, it's good to have my trust in Mr. Rappaport, and it's well-placed. And thank you so much for everything that you do. Thank you to the council for their lively discussion today, and thank you for passing the additional resolution to make sure that the police department gets taken care of. Is there a motion to adjourn?